This conference will now be recorded.
6:00 PM, June 1st, 2022, meeting of the Monterey Select Board. And the first item on our agenda is meet with Mead Talerman and Costa regarding the appointment and engagement of town council. And I see Adam Costa, Attorney Costa is here on the line with us. Is your audio work?
I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Sorry, we're having an audio difference.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
All right, so thank you. So last week, we discussed the town council proposals. Susan and I agreed to reach out to Mead Talerman and Costa and ask for a flat fee proceeding. Do you have some questions about the agreement and the attachment proposals? Are you ready for some questions, Attorney Costa?
I am.
So I noticed that telephone calls and correspondence and emails are billed at a minimum of two tenths of an hour. Is that at two tenths of an hour increments or one tenth of an hour minimum, two tenths of an hour?
Sure, Mr. Chair. So typically, when we bill our clients hourly, we bill at a minimum for telephone conferences and emails of .2 hours. Beyond the first .2 hours or 12-minute increment, we bill at six-minute increments, .1 hours. So if a phone call lasts between 12 and 18 minutes, it's rounded up to 18 minutes or .3 hours. If a phone call lasts between 18 minutes and 24 minutes, it's billed at .4 hours or 24 minutes. I will tell you that from a flat fee perspective, at least with regard to matters that fall within the confines of the flat fee, while we would still maintain that same billing practice for consistency with how we bill other clients and for what is ultimately shown on your monthly invoices, in the end, it doesn't matter because you're paying a flat fee for those services. So whether we were to bill at a minimum of .2 or you were to say, well, we're really uncomfortable with that, we'd like you to bill at a minimum of .1 even for a phone call that lasts only five minutes, bottom line is that it's still within the flat fee and so you're not going to realize on the back end any sort of an increase in your monthly retainer. That retainer is a flat fee of what we proposed in the attachment to our fee agreement.
Thank you. Yeah, that answers my question. One other question was, in the attachment scope of services and billing schedule, it's noted that round trip travel to and from the town offices, et cetera, will be billed from the Milis office for services that aren't included in the flat fee. Is that billed at the regular blended rate of $180 an hour or is it a reduced rate for travel?
Sure. So we always bill travel at the same rate as whatever service we might be providing. I will tell you that our general practice, and I think I had mentioned to you, Mr. Chair, that we were going to have to sort of reinvent the wheel to some extent here in attempting to create a flat fee proposal for a community of Monterey's size and with Monterey's budget. So in most communities, whether it's a flat fee model with certain services that might be exempt from the flat fee, like litigation or labor services, or it's a strict hourly client where we bill all services on an hourly basis, we always bill from whichever office, we typically bill from whichever office the attorney would originate. So if the attorney is, in my case, I work from our Newburyport office, that's where I'm stationed, that's where I work most days when I'm in the office, I would bill my community's round trip from Newburyport. What I tried to do here in Monterey's case, recognizing that while none of our offices are particularly close to Monterey, certainly the Milis office is the closest in terms of immediate access to the Mass Pike and certainly closer than the North Shore where I'm located, I tried to provide some benefit there, even though when I do travel to Monterey, I'll be traveling most days from Newburyport, I would only capture in my billing the round trip travel from the Milis office. And again, that would be only for services outside of the flat fee. Flat fee would include the number of meetings that I've specified, including a certain number of live meetings, including annual and special town meetings, and no extra charge.
Thank you. Susan, do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
So one other question that I had is, you know, for services inside the flat fee, I understand this wouldn't cause any additional charge on the town, but it's understood and agreed that the hourly time charges for legal services include legal research, correct? We're losing your audio right there. We got you better now.
Okay. So I will say, Mr. Chairman, that there's an expectation, I think, when municipalities, whether they induce the formal RFP process or they solicit.
We're losing, I think, there's a little audio difference over there. It sounds like a finger on a microphone or something.
Okay, I'm going to shut my video off just for a moment and hope that maybe that improves the connection.
Yeah, we can hear you well.
That's great. So I was just beginning to say that I think there's an expectation when a community engages municipal council, that that municipal council is going to be experienced, of course, in general municipal law. So while the statement you've made is correct, that legal research, whether it's within the flat fee or if it's in connection with litigation and it's outside the flat fee, would be billed to the town in some form or fashion, either hourly or flat fee, there's also an expectation on your part, or there should be, that we're not going to be researching the basics of some of the simpler municipal law questions. If I get a question from the town of Monterey regarding nonconformities and the standard for a modification of a pre-existing nonconforming structure, you're going to expect that I have a sense as to the way nonconformities work. I'm not going to be researching what is a nonconformity and, you know, what is the standard in Chapter 48, Section 6 for modifications of nonconformities? If you ask me a question about an appeal of an abatement application about process and procedure before the appellate tax board, I'm not going to be researching the basics of how that process works. I know how that process works. I'm a municipal law attorney. So there is an expectation that there's a baseline of knowledge that doesn't require that sort of extensive research, but anything that might be unique, and certainly unique issues arise all the time in the litigation context, we would bill for that research. And if it's litigation, it would be billed hourly. And if it's nonlitigation, then whether we're researching five hours or 15 hours, it would be a part of that flat fee. That may mean that some months or some quarters we take a bath and it may mean that other quarters we don't.
And thank you. I think that makes sense. And I know that we want to come to an agreement that works for both parties. My last question is about labor employment law and labor employment matters as it concerns the flat fee agreement. It's noted in the scope of services, the flat fee includes only generic legal advice and assistance with labor employment matters, but not contract or union negotiations, grievances, mediation, arbitration, or litigation. And then obviously, if employment and labor matters that weren't in that flat fee would be charged at the hourly rate, I guess my question is where does the generic legal advice and assistance with labor employment matters begin? Where does it end? Will you be able to apply within the flat fee agreement, you know, legal advice to our particular situation or would that push into the hourly rate billing? Because I know that it seems like the majority of our issues will probably be labor employment related, and it would be very different depending on whether these would be included within the flat fee or whether, you know, applying general advice to particular situations would be billed hourly.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I will tell you that, you know, we're not in the business of trying to nickel and dime our clients. It doesn't, number one, we don't believe it's the professional or ethical thing to do. And number two, it doesn't really behoove us to do that because we're running a law firm as a business like any other. We want to attract municipal clients. We value our reputation. As you know, I know you've done your due diligence because I've had my clients tell me that they've received calls from representatives of the town of Monterey indicating that they are vetting us as a potential, potential legal counsel. So our reputation is important. It's important in terms of how we practice. It's important in terms of gaining new business. And so it wouldn't behoove us to be nickel and diming our clients. You know, with that said, we are running a business and we have associates to pay and we have overhead to pay. With regard to this labor and employment practice, it's incredibly challenging for us as a law firm. And I think I've said to you, I think I may have even said it at the last meeting, that we only have one other municipal client where we bill labor and employment under the flat fee arrangement. Every other municipal client and most of our municipal clients are on a flat fee retainer type structure with the firm. In all of those other instances, labor and employment is exempt from that flat fee. It's billed hourly. And part of the reason for that is the uncertainty associated with labor and employment matters. And in some communities, it's the lion's share of work and other communities it's not. What we see most often is that some years, especially in communities, for example, that have unionized employees, and I know that Monterey doesn't, but you'll have union negotiations maybe all hit at the same time within the same fiscal year and then not hit again for several years. And so you've got a year that's particularly heavy on the labor and employment law and then it's especially quiet for two or three years thereafter. And, you know, you, as a municipality, would be, to use that same analogy or metaphor I used before, you'd be taking a bath maybe three out of every four years because we'd be billing you on a flat fee for labor employment services you wouldn't be using. And, you know, only one out of every four years, maybe, would we be providing services that would justify our effective hourly rate. So in a community like Monterey, because we've got to structure a fee agreement that, to be candid, is so low, the monthly retainer is, I think, the lowest, it is the lowest of any community where we have a flat fee arrangement, including labor and employment is really risky for us as a firm. Because if, in fact, as you say, most of your work happens to be labor and employment, maybe at first, maybe in the future, I don't know, and that work is significant and we're talking tens upon tens of hours on a month-to-month basis, then that really has a significant impact and effect on our effective hourly rate. So what we attempted to do, and this is what we've done in that one other community where we have provided labor services as part of the flat fee, is we have agreed, and I recognize that there's a gray area, but we have agreed that we would provide generic labor and employment advice. So if there are questions, to your point, Mr. Chairman, if there are questions about what the law provides for, we would give answers. And certainly, those questions I would expect are going to be asked in the context of a particular situation and we will give advice that is tailored to that particular situation. We're not going to simply recite for you what the law books say and expect you to apply it to your situation. That's what we do as lawyers. But when it gets beyond that, when it becomes a question of attending grievance proceedings or processing a grievance or engaging in negotiations, union or otherwise, collective bargaining, engaging in litigation or even arbitration or mediation, those types of tasks tend to be very work-intensive. They tend to require significant investments of time. And so if we had to process a grievance and we had to assist with that process and attend proceedings, which typically we attend live because they're better handled that way, and then we have to potentially further litigate those cases, whether it be at MCAD or in the courts, there's a significant cost associated with that. And so those services would be billed hourly. But yes, there's a gray area. We don't intend to take advantage of it. And I guess I'll, my last comment on this point, because I know I've spoken for a while to answer what seemed like a simple question, but my last point is that I've said something here in the attachment A that I proposed, and I'm just going to read it for your benefit and the benefit of those who may be listening. I've said, "By executing the preceding fee agreement, the firm and the client agree to revisit and renegotiate if necessary, though within scope of services and billing schedule, it being the party's objective that the scope and schedule will create a mutually beneficial relationship between them." And that doesn't really say anything that isn't the law anyway. You always have the authority to impart ways with your general municipal council or your labor council. We are employees and will like anybody else. But it's a recognition that, you know, because of the nature of a flat fee arrangement, particularly in a community like Monterey, there's a little bit of guesswork. We're looking at your budget. We're taking your word for it in terms of what sorts of services you need or will need in the upcoming fiscal year. And we may look back on this in a year and say, gosh, the effective hourly rate doesn't really justify the work that we're doing there. It's where we can't even cover our costs. Or conversely, you may look and say, we didn't need to use general municipal or even labor council nearly as much as we thought when we were paying 1,500 bucks a month and we called them and utilized, you know, three hours of attorney time and the effective hourly rate was $500 an hour, which is far too high for municipal services. So the idea is that we'll take a look at this again in a year or so and make whatever adjustment might be necessary, presuming that we're both satisfied with the relationship, but the economics may be favoring one party more than the other.
Thank you.
Mr. Costa, would you say that since you know that we're in the process of overhauling our employee handbook, and Kate had mentioned that under those circumstances, often she would offer some preliminary advice as we go into that process, and then on the other end, once we've gone through the process, looked it over again to make sure we're meeting all mass law, would either of those ends be included in the flat fee or would those also be hourly? Because I'm not sure if that counts as general or not.
I think that, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think that that would qualify as general or generic labor and employment advice. I mean, it's not a specific negotiation or arbitration or mediation. It's not a grievance. It's not something that requires that sort of an investment of time. So I think on both the front end and the back end, providing some general advice to start and then reviewing your policies once they've been drafted, that's the sort of generic advice that would be included within the flat fee.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all the questions that we had, and we will make a decision and get back to you as soon as possible.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the time, the opportunity to answer your questions, and I appreciate you accommodating my busy schedule tonight and meeting a bit earlier than you had originally intended. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Are we, do we want to finish our conversation on this?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that we need representation. I think this was a reasonable proposal, given, I mean, it has limitations, but it is just a flat fee, which is more than we were going to be offered anywhere else.
And so my concern, my concern is that we did get a flat fee agreement as requested, but that it doesn't, it's not really in our interest because I feel that many of the times that we'll be utilizing council will be billed an hourly rate, and it will only possibly leave things more up in the air as to we'll get, you know, we're going to be charged our flat fee agreement whether we ask, like you said, whether we have three hours or five hours or 10 hours. But then if you add our hourly employment services on top of that, it's going to, I think, going to be very high. And going back and reviewing Kate Federoff and Donna Brewer, I actually feel that Donna Brewer has more experience and might be a better fit for our situation. And I think one of the things that moved me towards Mead Talerman initially was that we were comfortable with a flat, that we might get a flat fee, but the flat fee really excluded so many services that I feel like it is going to go against our interests. I asked the question about legal research, right? Because it says, it is understood and agreed that the hourly time charges for legal services include but are not limited to the following, including legal research. That's in Mead Talerman.
That's Mead Talerman.
Myers and Harrington said that there is no charge for routine copying, scanning, or online legal research. So maybe that's a small piece, but I did really get the sense, I mean, in the response, right, even in this email that you have here, to me, he's making it pretty clear that he doesn't think that they can operate, you know, within Monterey's budget, you know, for a flat fee agreement because it's so low. He said it's the lowest flat fee agreement in the state. And I, you know, when I pushed him on the employment matters, because I'm afraid that almost any employment matter, as soon as any particular situation is involved, is going to be billed an hourly rate. And he said that he wouldn't necessarily do that because of the firm's reputation, which I'm not, didn't really satisfy me. I'm just afraid that we're going to get this flat fee agreement and then we're going to be paying hourly for lots of employment services.
They also, I mean, they initially gave us a contract that was hourly.
That was hourly at one year.
Myers and Harrington also gave us.
Yes. And so.
Were there, did you feel there were significant differences between, I mean, Myers and Harrington was actually a higher hourly rate.
225 for partners and counsel.
Other than that, other than the actual rate, did you feel there were other significant differences between what they're offering? I mean, because one option would be to go with NPC on the hourly basis, if we're, like, if it depends.
Absolutely. I think that's one option. And I think when I get to that point where, you know, we could go with Mead Talerman on an hourly basis, I look at Kate Federoff and Donna Brewer and think that Donna Brewer brings more experience to the table. I mean, they serve as special labor council in some towns, right? And when you go on Myers and Harrington's website and you look at what are their areas, right, employment, labor employment or employment is one of their top five areas, which, how much does it mean? I don't really know, but it's not one of the top five areas in Mead Talerman and Costa. And I just think that Brewer seemed more experienced. And I think if it gets to the point of do we go with the hourly rate of Mead Talerman, do we go with hourly rate of Myers Harrington, I would prefer going with Attorney Brewer of Myers Harrington. I think also the other thing is she would be the primary contact for the town and she already does the employment litigation, right, employment matters, rather than having the secondary attorney, the employment attorney. And they also have a reduced rate for travel. It's 140, but rather than the full rate, and did Brewer say that they were going to charge from Stockbridge?
I don't think so.
Or charge from, I forget, but I feel like, I feel like basically what Mead Talerman did is to come up with a flat fee agreement. He said they're not nickel and diming us, but, you know, they're charging full rate for travel. It's not travel included in the flat fee. They're charging for employment if it's not generic, which I don't.
My biggest concern was that one trip out here runs like 900 bucks.
Yeah, I think, should we, I think this is probably a long discussion.
My biggest, true. My concern, however, is that we are currently without counsel as of today.
Yeah.
So I feel like it's a matter of somewhat depressing matter, and if we don't make a decision today, we're talking about at least another week unless we're calling another meeting, what, by Monday?
Monday. I think it's absolutely something that we should make movement on today, but I'm not worried about it momentarily perhaps, per se.
Okay.
But should we, I think that discussion will probably run longer than 6:30 PM. So shall we move at 6:30 PM? Terry, ready?
Yes, I am.
So on 6:30, we have meet with Terry Walker, discuss town clerk posted office hours. So we receive on Saturday, you said that you could schedule hours for Thursday, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Fridays, 12 noon to 8:00 PM, Saturdays by appointment, Wednesdays available for select board meetings with advance notice. And the remainder of the 7.75 hours will be worked at your own discretion when you work times and days when you feel safe without hostility. So I would be willing to accept these proposed hours.
So I have a couple of questions before I just jump on the bandwagon. First of all, would it make more sense from a, I consider the clerk position to be, I'll call it a public-facing position, right? Like, your main job is interacting with people that have a need for a clerk. I mean, obviously, the town does as well. So, you know, from my perspective, it seems important to have hours that work for people to find you and know when you're there. The point of office hours to me is that you're reliable, they know they can come then, they can schedule their time, they don't have to make a separate phone call or text to arrange it. I, you know, I would normally like to see them during business hours, normal business hours, which Fridays are. Under those circumstances, I'd be willing to accept these at least provisionally till we get the employment handbook renovated, revised, and the HR person fully engaged. I do wonder, though, would it make more sense to have the two days separated more so that, I mean, I don't know if this happens. Does somebody come in on a Wednesday and it takes a day to process and they need to pick it up, or is that usually not a problem? Like, do you need to have two days separated enough that you could get some business done for someone if they needed it?
Necessarily. You know, usually it works out fine, two days in row. Gary's here to post the agendas on their bulletin board. They can call my cell phone. I could always meet them by appointment as well. I'm not against that.
I know you've been doing that.
Saturday's my biggest day with marriages, dog licensing. Like, there's people in here all day Saturday. That is, so I have an evening, an afternoon, and then a Saturday.
And the, what, can you clarify what it means to work at your own discretion? Is that time that you're coming into town hall or are you working somewhere else?
I work here.
Okay. Well, it could be either one. I don't know. Some people work remotely. For all I know, you can work remotely, but I don't know if that's.
I can't work from home because.
Because of computers.
Computers. So I never work from home.
Would it be possible for your assistant to possibly have some hours another time during the day or is it not possible for him to work independently?
The only thing he can, would do is post the agendas. Everything has three passwords on those computers, and that's the issue. It's very safe. And the state computer has three passwords.
So essentially, in order for him to be, except for the agendas, you kind of both need to be there for him to be useful to you?
Mm-hmm.
I'm willing to accept these at least provisionally till we get more changes made. I mean, ultimately, I feel like, you know, I put together this list of hours for lots of offices. It's not just for all of the adjacent towns. And pretty much every single court has normal business hours during normal business hours, like within, I think some of them might start at eight, but most of them are within the eight to five range.
And I had normal business hours for five years, so.
So you know what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about.
So ultimately, I, my goal would be to get us back.
You want to stop?
Sure. I'm not opposed to, yeah.
I just want to mention that normal business hours are great for people that don't work. If somebody has a job and they need to see the clerk, normal business hours don't work.
And in fact, I'm also open to the idea of having like at least one day, a later day, and I'm even open to the possibility of Saturday hours in a town where we have so many second homeowners. I'm not opposed to that. I would just like us to, I would like to have all those things on the table, but I would like us to have a regular set of hours and be working for, at least to. but I would like us to have a, a regular set of hours and be working for at least a significant number of them being during regular business hours, because I think it makes sense.
Uh, Nancy.
She did mention her business day, busiest day is Saturday. That's not a normal business hour. On her busiest day.
Yeah, I think it, it makes a lot of sense. I know that there's a couple of other offices opening town hall on Saturday. And I think that, you know, second homeowners and people who work Saturdays do work. So we can maybe look into that in the future, and you have Sat-, you have listed Saturdays by appointment. Um, I would motion to accept these proposed hours.
A second.
Any further discussion?
Um, the only other thing I'd like to say is that, um, I, I really meant it when I said that if you have, if you would like to give us some proposals for things we could change. And I meant that in here too, because a couple of times you mentioned to me previously that it was uncomfortable for you to come in here to the slide board. And we are limited by OML, like, that's how we have to do it. So I would like this to be a place that people could come. So, you know, I told you already, we modify the rules so we can shut before the comment if we think that's important. But if you have other ideas that we could actually enact that would make this a more, I won't hospitalable place, I'm not sure that's the right word, but please tell us, because we can't change things if we don't have the idea ourselves, unless, you know, giving us an idea is helpful. So.
Yeah, we're definitely hoping to work, um, in a positive direction going forward. But we, and, and we have some ideas and we're already working on some things, but we are open to suggestions. I think we're on the same page on that. So that's all the discussion. Uh, I'll call a vote on the motion to accept the hours as proposed.
Second.
Uh, calling a vote. Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries. Hours are accepted, Thursdays, four PM to eight PM, Fridays, twelve noon to eight PM. Saturdays by appointment, Wednesdays availability for slide board meetings with advance notice. Okay. Would you like to continue with the discussion of town council?
Well, I think we would be good to get us one in letters.
Yeah, so-
Although, do you wanna talk about the mediation thing while Terry's still here?
We could, I also see, uh, okay. Let's, let's do council so that we, then we can move through the agenda in order.
All right.
So that's where I'm at. I think that I don't see the flat fee agreement working in our favor as much as I thought it might.
I'm sure they'd go back to the hourly.
Well, they, I'm sure they would go back to the hourly, uh, right? Because that was their initial proposal. I think one thing is we could, and I don't think they'd be wanting to do it, so I don't think it's really worth asking, but if we lowered the flat fee agreement to a point where we actually had money to work with on an hourly basis, because really, we're talking a few hours a year now, right? Because there, they come out to eighteen a year and we have nineteen budgeted.
Right.
So we have one thousand dollars of hourly money.
Right, right, which is not much.
Yeah. Um, that would be like one meeting of coming out here, right?
Well, nine hundred bucks just to get here.
Um, and yeah, I mean, it does concern me. I know the flat fee agreement included coming to town meeting. That's very quarterly meetings of driving here. But as soon as we need to pay them their full rate to come here, we're paying for legal research. I do, I, as much as, you know, Attorney Costa tried to say they weren't nickel and, nickel and diming them. Uh, he was kind of also upfront about the fact that he was, because they weren't making any money on the flat fee agreement. And, and I just don't feel that the employment services, you know, the, we have to trust that they're not going to charge employment services at an hourly rate, because that will hurt their reputation. Um, as soon as they charge, you know, a couple, a couple two-hour projects, we're, you know, we're, we're running out of money. I would, I, I feel like we control our own destiny more with an hourly rate, period, whether it's with Mead Talaman or with Myers Harrington. And yes, uh, Myers Harrington, Donna Brewer had a higher rate, but she would also be the primary contact. And I don't, I wouldn't foresee us, based on the way that she was speaking and Costa and Peteroff were speaking, I feel like if we had Donna Brewer as our primary counsel for the town, she probably wouldn't be sourcing out many things.
Interesting, like, she covered a lot of things. And I, I, like I said, I, I liked her fine in the interview. I, I will say that having called everybody's, all, like, everybody's references, um, no one had anything bad to say about Donna, um. The Mead Talaman and Costa reps were glowing, which does seem like a rare thing to me. But I, I, I thought she seemed competent and direct and thoughtful, um. They're more expensive hourly, and so if we're going on the hourly thing, that may be an issue. But your point is, well, pay them.
She's more experienced, right? I mean, you pay for hours that are worked and billed, and the more experienced someone is, the more, the less time it's gonna take them. And I, I don't, maybe it's a small detail, but I don't think it's, should be overlooked that, you know, Myers and Harrington said they're not gonna charge for online legal research. And, and Mead Talaman is, and he said that. And he said, well, you know, there shouldn't be that much research, because if you're experienced, there's not a lot of research. But if you're experienced and there's not a lot of research, then don't charge for it. Um, you know what I'm saying?
I, I do.
I, I do, I do get the sense from the flat fee agreement that they proposed. I think it's more within our abilities to just do hourly, whether it's one or the other. And we can be judicious about our use. Once we commit to a flat fee, we've pretty much signed away most of our legal budget. That doesn't include contract negotiations, employment matters. We don't really have the budget for that anymore. Yeah, we can get, you know, emergency funds, but if we knew that right off the bat and we had, you know, nineteen thousand dollars for the next fiscal year to spend on legal counsel, we could know, okay, we're not gonna ask them this minor question about this or that, because we need to use that judiciously on employment matters.
Um, I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be able to keep it within the budget on the hourly thing, and there, you know, sometimes there's unforeseen issues. Um, but I, I'm not opposed to doing hourly. Um, and there is always the tension between the more expensive or the less expensive one. I, I feel like they're both, um, pretty skilled. I'm okay with going with Myers and Harrington. Just keep in mind also that Myers and Harrington is serving Stockbridge to the two to forty-eight K as a flat fee. Right? So it's not, when he says that this is an unusually low flat fee, it's true. Right? The flat fees that they're getting from the other towns I talked to, forty-eight was a low. I mean, Mead Talaman and Costa's flat fees were running fifty K and up.
Yeah.
Um, and we know Stockbridge is forty-eight K. Um, so I think they're being honest about that.
No, absolutely, and we don't want anything where, where they're, where they're gonna quit in six months.
And I don't wish to be in a situation where we, um, are stuck in some, in a year with no more money left or legal counsel as we're approaching town meeting, which I'm pretty sure does happen to towns.
Yeah, and I, and my fear is that if we sign off the budget for general legal things in a flat fee agreement, we, and we have one day of employment matters.
Yeah.
That's it, right? And we have a little bit more control, at least for this year. If next year we wanna look into raising the budget, uh, we can see how it goes. But at least if we go hourly, we, we can be more judicious and allocate it where we think it's most important. And then, uh, and if we're gonna go hourly, I really feel like Brewer is the better, uh, Myers and Harrington is the better choice.
Did you call any of her?
I did not, I don't think.
Um, I have a weird question that's related. What are we covering, the insurance coverage order that we have? What does that actually cover in terms of legal issues? So if we do have, um, mediation or arbitration with an employee, they don't cover that?
It's only if a suit is brought against the town.
Uh-huh, okay. But if a suit is brought against the town, then they do provide coverage?
Yeah, I don't wanna say yes or no, because I don't have the policy in front of me, but you're welcome to come in and look at it. I wasn't prepared for that question.
That, that's okay. It just seemed relevant, because, um, I, what, one of the questions I had was whether or not, how, how that works? If someone brings a suit against the town and we're covered by insurance, but we also have legal counsel, how does that get parceled out?
So with the current situation that you have, that's going to be covered by insurance. It's not gonna involve counsel, town council.
Okay. And I think the fact of the matter is whether things are covered by insurance or not. We still have a lot of employment matters, right?
Oh, no argument.
Uh, and I just, you know, um, uh, Attorney Peteroff, when she spoke with us, you know, she's been around for more than a decade, um, and she, it seemed like she had done a lot of union negotiations. When I looked into Donna Brewer, I think she might have, uh, more applicable, uh, to our situation
Okay.
of experience. And I, I just think that, you know, we're gonna be paying hourly. It's forty dollars an hour different, but you never know if, if she charges less time, because it's quicker, then you're actually, you know.
Right.
Um, so I, I would, you know, I would like to go forward with, with, uh, with Donna Brewer of Myers and Harrington. I am, I think it's a good thing that we asked for a flat fee agreement. But I think unfortunately, what we learned, or I learned, I was expecting, you know, when Jeremiah Pollard was town council, when KP Law was town council, they had flat fee agreements that were very inclusive, and few things were outside of the flat fee. And it seemed like, maybe even more so with Attorney Pollard, to my understanding, and then last with KP Law. And it seemed like when we asked for Mead Talaman and Costa, I mean, he was upfront, right? In that email, he said to me, we're gonna have to be creative. And I think they took just about everything they could've. I mean, they were offering to do a training, but the training was gonna be hourly. And, uh, legal online research is gonna be hourly. It felt like if we're stretching it that far to do a flat fee agreement, let's not. Uh, especially because it leaves us with no money and no means to be, you know, at least we have more, more control. So I don't know, uh, where you're at, but I would, you know, be open to just accepting Donna Brewer's proposal, Myers and Harrington of an hourly rate. Which, her hourly rate?
I was just gonna say, I don't, I don't have information.
To jog in memory, it was, uh-
Hers was two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five per hour for partners and counsel, two fifteen for associate attorneys, one forty for travel, and one twenty-five for paralegals and law courts. I'm also not opposed to, you know, finalizing this next week or on Monday.
I'd like to see us get a coverage as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the one forty for travel would count all the hours back and forth, you know? Or did, did it?
Yeah. Melissa, do you recall where, I don't think, where did Attorney Brewer station is going to charge from? I couldn't have been further away than Millis, which is two hours, right?
Right, probably not. I don't remember where their offices were. I'm gonna go with that MTC stuff on top.
I am not finding the Myers and Harrington contact for anything.
Yeah, I don't think it mentions where they're going from.
Actually, that's actually, I never find the one you're looking for. It doesn't say in there, it just says the one forty per hour.
Yeah, but I mean, even if they billed from Wellesley, it's not any, any closer.
She was on the one eighty.
Yeah, I mean, it's a reduced rate, and I think it's at least nice to acknowledge that. I was kind of surprised that they billed a full hourly rate, I mean, minimum two tenths of an hour. I don't know how many six-minute conversations you're gonna have. If you do, to get billed for twelve minutes, it just felt like, okay, they're giving us a flat fee to try to give us a break, but then they're, in every other way possible, not giving us a rate to try and give them.
Do you recall with Brewer, I think that they were, that did include, um, I think they weren't gonna charge for travel to the annual town meeting? Do I remember that correctly?
I, I remember that specifically mentioned, uh, certain annual town events were included and would not be billed for travel. All, I can't remember where she was traveling from.
But I remember that, so. I'm okay with it. I liked her.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we did due diligence on both of them. They both have excellent references. If you're comfortable about, more comfortable going with her, then let's do it.
Yeah. I think, I just, I think it was worth asking about the flat fee, but it became quickly apparent that they weren't gonna offer us what we had previously worked on in the flat fee.
And I, I don't think we're gonna find it again?
Yeah.
Um, but I mean-
Yeah, we're not gonna find it again, but, and you know, if we're going hourly, I just think that she might-
Put more?
Uh, who's to say, but, um, I don't-
Yeah, like, and some of that's just a feeling that you have about whether you, you think you can get the answer to me from a particular person, or they have the app that you want, and there's no, right? There's only, that's a gut instinct, you know, to go with it. So I, I like her, I'm willing to do it.
Okay, so, first thing about how it was this. Um, she has offered us a proposal, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess we could accept the proposal, we could appoint town council, or if you think of another way to word it, to make it clear, um-
Have you spoken with her since that meeting?
No.
Okay.
I have not. Um.
Um, are you thinking about how to word it in tonight's record, or how to word it to them?
Yeah, I think in the record. I mean, I think they've, they've made a proposal.
Right, so I think we say we're gonna accept their proposal and appoint them as town council?
Uh, so I would make a motion to accept the proposal from Myers and Harrington, uh, with Donna, and specifically from Donna Brewer, and appoint, uh, the firm and Donna Brewer as, as town council. And the rates in, that were proposed in the agreement are two twenty-five per hour for partners and counsel, two fifteen per hour for associate attorneys, one forty per hour for travel, one twenty-five per hour for paralegals and law courts. Um, that's my motion.
Second. Did you ever have a comment, Nancy?
No, I'm just curious if anybody spoke to Donna about maybe negotiating the fee, or she's set in stone.
They said they would not offer it.
They, yes, and I think one of the reasons at least I wanted to ask Mead Talaman is because they were the only ones that expressed interest in even offering a flat fee.
Yeah.
Um, is there any other discussion before we vote? All right, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Susan, yes, Justin, yes, the motion to appoint Myers and Harrington, Donna Brewer, as town council carries with the proposal sent on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. And that's that agenda item. Old Business Review of Employee Mediators, Letter of Engagement, and Schedule. So as we spoke about last week, I reached out to Quavon Mediation and got some prices. Like you said, it's two hundred dollars per session, uh, but there's also sometimes a case management fee of fifty dollars, or there is in this offer. Um, so I, when I spoke with him and read their website, it seemed like something that would be good for the town, and there was a recommendation of the report, and-
Did you feel comfortable with Mr. Sattler as a lawyer?
Yeah, it seemed, I mean, it seems like they've worked with municipal governments. Uh, they worked in all kinds of situations in that. He was, you know, ready and willing. We look forward to being of service to the town and Monterey, right? I think he had the, um, right mindset. Um, I would, I would propose that we, um, agree to, um, at least one session or paying for one session between Terry Walker and Melissa Nowe, and between Justin Lakeup and Melissa Nowe, which would be-
That's two different things, I'm assuming.
Two, yeah, so that'd be two hundred and fifty dollars per. So if we agreed on that, then we would, we would authorize up to five hundred dollars. Hi, Terry.
Hi, I cannot mediate. If you have any questions about mediation, you can contact my lawyer, uh, Tim Burke. I can't talk about that today.
Okay. All right, so if Terry's not comfortable, uh, doing mediation, um, I would still, I still think it'd be fruitful, uh, for myself, being a town administrator, if the board is willing to. Hey, that.
If you guys are willing to work with, respect each other, I'm all for it.
I'm willing to work with everybody, Susan.
I know it.
Good for you.
All right.
So, um, I don't, the only question would be if we wanna start with just one session, and that would be two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and if we agreed on that price, we have the money in select board expenses?
Yes.
Um, I would say that we should go ahead and say up to two sessions, because let's just leave that there, because sometimes things, yeah. He said it's one session sometimes, but sometimes it takes two. When I spoke to him, it was pretty clear it was rare for people more than that. So I think we should go ahead and authorize two, and if you don't need it, then we don't have to pay it.
Yeah, of course, yeah, they'll only bill for what.
You actually do, yeah.
But, I don't know. So, I would motion to authorize, uh, you know, I will reach out to Quavon Mediation and authorize uh, up to two sessions of mediation between myself and the town administrator with Bob Sekula for four hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Uh, is there any other further discussion? Sean.
What? You gotta do something with that problem. You have to force mediation, you have to do something.
Well, you can't force mediation, because you can put the horse's head under the water, but you can't make it great. However, we can, once we have town council, we get council to write a letter to her lawyer, asking.
I think one thing that, you know, we don't wanna open the town to any further legal liability, so I don't think we should discuss particular employees in an open meeting like this, but.
It's time to press forward though, Justin.
I, I will say that I, it is a concern to me.
It's disrespectful to the town, what's going on.
It, it is a concern to me that she was clearly not willing to participate in mediation, and has shown, you know, indicated so far as to this point, I don't know what will happen in the future, um, has not seemed willing to, um, make any suggestions or recommendations about what would make her comfortable, other than being here outside of.
Well, and, and I think, I, I, I think it's not even incumbent upon, you know, the, the problems have been made very clear and aired out in, in public in many ways, so the board has some directions on how to move forward, um, and we're beginning that process, which I think is not an easy or a short process, and I think it's good that we're beginning on that road. Mediation was one of the recommendations, we're moving forward, at least in some way with that, and I think it's, it's a, you know, this employment, and every employment situation is a two-sided, is a two-sided, at least uh, agreement, and we have our side of the, the deal to uphold, you can't uh, just show up and say, you know, I'm ready to move forward, are you, and it's a process of building goodwill and trust and safety, and I think it's good that we're beginning that process, but, uh, it's, I think it's a long process, so.
If you're hopeful that you may get some movement in a, in that direction, then I'm willing to stick it out. Um, you know, I, I'd like to wait until we have council, and then have our council actually extend formal instructions of her council for her to participate in that. Um, but we can process it once we have council.
All right, so is there a vote on the motion for the four hundred and fifty dollars mediation?
Yes.
Uh, yes from Susan, yes from Justin, the motion carries, and I will reach out to Bob and let him know that that money is available.
Okay.
So the next item is the draft ten-point plan based on recommendations made by the Green Report, so that's number two.
Is it now the nine-point plan?
It is now the nine-point plan, so I would motion to amend the agenda to read draft nine-point plan. Um. So, changes that I need.
Yes, thank you, because this one doesn't, it just has the final person, so.
It just has the what?
Like, there's no red on here, so we just have, like, we just have the point about.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, let me, let me update you on some of the changes. Um, I think there was a few wording changes. I added a new bullet point under number three, which was the bullet point directives for handling improper behavior of citizens towards town employees, which I think goes along with the directives for handling disputes between members of the town staff who are not necessarily employees, and details, specific procedures for the reporting, investigating, or responding to employee disputes outside the chain of command. Because I think we want an employee handbook that kind of can address every situation that can come up.
Yep.
Um, not, not necessarily because they're, they'll make it easy to deal with, but at least there's some guidance, because um, when it's clear there's a supervisor, an employee, that's very clear how that works, but when there's a citizen in order, a contractor for the town, right, it's a little more unclear.
Yeah, for sure, I think it's, it was more than just a little unclear.
Yeah, and so then, under number four, there was assuring employees who have initiated complaints that they're right to be free from retaliation, and providing conduit, conduit through which any retaliatory conduct can be reported. I added set a procedure for addressing retaliatory conduct, including consequences for continued behavior. Um.
I, I feel like the same thing should be true of not just retaliatory conduct, but like, I don't even know how to word it, never mind.
Well, I think, you know, the new employee, hopefully address all situations that come up.
Address all the situations, we're just mentioning it here, but.
Um. And then obviously I took out the bullet point about, um, about records access that we discussed last week, which is why it's nine points.
Okay, the town should implement procedures to independently address and provide redress to complainants. How is that different than the other things you just spelled out?
Um, I think that's more, more, more broadly, um, it's a part of the employee handbook, but, um, it, that would, I think more generally, what's the, what's the procedure for when someone has, uh, concerns about the workplace of the town government? It's, I mean, it seems kind of basic, but, uh, it was a recommendation of the report, and I think it will be helpful to the board.
I don't have any problem with it, I'm just not sure how it's different from all the other things that are already on there.
I think it's just broad, and it's, you know, brings it out to emphasize that.
Fair, it's just hard to know if you've actually checked that one off the list, if you don't actually know what it's directed at, but.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, how are we able to say we met it if we're not even sure what it refers to?
Yeah, well, I would think of it as, uh, in the employee handbook, and then actually um, having the people there, the person may be an HR director, whoever it may be, in place to address concern.
Okay, that's fair.
Well, ready to adopt this, uh, if you are.
Sorry, I just gotta read numbers on it. Sure, uh, this mine's numbered. Do you have one that's not numbered, should be assigned out?
No, can we just get a clean copy, Melissa, of just this? There's no changes, but just without the number?
Oh, yeah, I have one for you to sign out here. Okay.
Okay, all right, so I would motion to adopt this, not now nine-point plan, uh, as drafted here.
Second.
By adopting the nine-point plan, does that leave the town obligated to abide by the nine-point plan?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a goal, and anything that the select board does by majority vote, it can usually change by majority vote. Um, so if at some point we come across something we wanna add, or remove, or amend, of course, the select board's entitled to do that.
Sure. Um. How long have you guys had that document? Since the?
How, how long have we been getting this around?
Since the report came out, yeah, yeah.
So I, I drafted it for myself, uh, late March.
Oh, I was, I was under the impression that the attorneys who did the, uh, investigation draft.
No, I dra, I drafted it, and.
And it's gone for a bunch of year range.
We've been working on, I think we've been working on it since the first meeting and the second meeting.
Yeah.
That's clear now.
First one, I think.
Um, so.
Do you want to see it?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a second motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? We'll call a vote on adopting this plan.
I adopt it. Yes.
Susan, yes. The motion carries, we'll sign it, we'll sign the clean copy later. Okay, we, we just finished number two of old business. I do see Adam Chee and Dennis Lynch here, so I think it'd be, makes sense to deal with them.
Yep.
Um, so Adam, we have the Fiber Connect Milestone sign-off, which means that you've done a certain amount of work, and that you're asking for requested funds that we already have agreed to give you once you reach that certain amount of work.
The funds are from the state, funded from this one year sign-off that we've accomplished.
Gotcha. All right.
I had a question about the, I'm not sure what it's, it's not really titled, Road Homes, Homes Passed.
Yep.
Um, is it, do I understand correctly that Homes Passed are the homes that were not served? And Homes are the homes that are serviced? Is that how those columns?
No, so this, that is, um, from pages twelve and thirteen of the town agreement.
Okay.
Uh, so it's basically copied in here, and then we keep track of which roads we've passed, which homes we've passed, so in the first column under Homes, those are the number of homes that are on that street.
Okay.
And in the second Home Homes Passed, because we've built out those streets, we now pass those. So of the three hundred and twenty-six homes that were left when the agreement was signed, two hundred and one have been passed, so sixty, almost sixty-two percent.
So to be passed means to be served by Fiber Connect?
They have the option to take service, there's no obligation.
I see, but there, it's available to them.
Yes.
Um, okay, so the homes that are, what's the third column that's unlabeled?
That's just our notes. Um, there are the three homes on South River Road and the four on South Porcher, which are not part of the original agreement, but we just made noted.
Okay, right. And, um, the homes, for example, that are, I know there's a bunch of homes, including Chris's home, that are not yet serviced out on Fairtown Mountain, and those would fall under the, or, or what are they, your old Fairtown?
Uh.
Or?
Old Fairtown.
Fairtown from Fairview to Forest.
Fairtown from Fairview to Forest, so there's, right, went to the state forest.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, so the, the Brett Road, Swan Road, uh, the south end of Fairview, Fairtown, Royal Hemlock, Tarranham, North of Heron Pines, Mount Hunger East, North Estates, um, New Marlboro Road, Wellman, Gould, Harmon, these are all in process.
Okay.
So, and I guess one very small question I have is just, in the excluded homes is included uh, Tarranham Road from Heron Pond to Tarranham Line, there's one home excluded?
Correct.
And then here, it says you have one home that you should pass, so is there one that's excluded and one that you need to?
Again, that spreadsheet is our internal notes, because obviously the, the original agreement doesn't reflect that. We always targeted a hundred percent of towns, so that is the rest of them, but we're not, under the agreement, we're not obligated to hit the one on, um, Tarranham Road and the, the, uh, the seven houses down on the south end of town. We're still trying to, trying to figure out a way to do it.
And one other question, not necessarily related to this, but since you're here, if you can help explain, I know that there's some homes in town, or at least one that I can think of, that doesn't even have electrical service.
Sandersville Road.
Yeah, and it's, it's not included as an excluded home from Fiber Connect's contract with the town of Monterey, but I imagine it's excluded?
Yeah, I don't think it was even listed in the agreement, because it doesn't even have a pole line to it.
Yeah.
Uh, I will say, we've been talking with National Grid, and I believe they're preparing a proposal for continuing the, the pole line down Crunk Road to service that house. And we're happy, we've told National Grid, we're happy to sit in on that conversation, because obviously we want to get on that, that route to serve that house.
And so then, as far as, um, hitting the rest of the one hundred and twenty-five homes, which I, when you last came in a few months ago, you said you were pretty much waiting on make-ready, is that your, your work?
We've been waiting for negotiations, we finally finished those, I think it was about three weeks ago. So we're waiting for all the revisions to come from National Grid and Verizon, and as soon as we get that, we can get them paid, and make-ready will get scheduled. We have no control over their schedule, but as soon as it's done, we'll start working.
Thank you.
I can tell you, Hager Molly, you know, they, they finished up make-ready, we were out there and had sections, and within a week, we were starting to work. And, uh, you know, a couple of weeks later, we have sections done.
And for, so, uh, for Fairtown Mountain Road to get service is, you're waiting for the make-ready, for the pole upgrades, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, and that is through Verizon, not National Grid, correct?
Both, so.
Oh, they co-own the poles, and in this town, National Grid sets the poles.
Okay. So they'd be the first ones out, and set any new poles, do any of the electrical work, and then it goes to Verizon.
Do you have any sort of way that you, uh, prioritize your work after those make-ready situations are dealt with? I see, I realize you're in demand.
It completely, it fluctuates day to day, depending on materials, what we have, and, you know, certain roads get a certain fiber count, other roads get another. If we can get, you know, the, the high-count fibers, we're gonna be out on the heavier road.
Yep.
Uh, Fairtown is an end-of-line, so it's a low-count fiber, so whenever it comes in, this is when we would get out.
Have you had any, uh, supply chain issues, I hate to say that?
Yes, a lot.
I mean, are you, what kind of delays are you looking at for, you know, random things?
Uh, it's, it, again, changing every day, we just place an order for a million feet of cable out of China, because we, it was a hundred weeks back, ordered it.
I realize it's really difficult to.
So, uh, hopefully that stuff comes in and passes tests and all that, and we can use it, otherwise, we're, you know, apparently a hundred weeks out.
A hundred weeks out?
Thank you, Adam.
That's the current estimates from some of the US suppliers.
Two years.
Uh, just about, just for the cable.
They're probably getting it from there, too.
Okay, so thank you for answering questions related to certification and beyond. Uh, tonight, I would motion to certify, uh, milestone two um, of the grant agreement relative to broadband services for the town of Monterey and Fiber Connect.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call a vote. Susan?
Yes.
Yes, Justin, yes. The motion carries to certi, certify milestone two.
Do we, I have a document to sign, I have.
We'll sign after the meeting.
No problem.
Okay, thank you for joining us, Adam.
No problem, thank you.
Uh, Dennis Lynch, uh, new business number nine, but we'll get to you, so you're not leading.
Yes.
So, you're applying, you're offering to write a grant to seek technical assistance to develop site assessment of town properties for the installation of roof and/or ground-mounted solar photoelectric arrays to generate renewable electricity to help operate town facilities, and you approximate forty-six hours to write the grant?
That would be an upset figure, not to exceed.
Yeah. Um, but.
Yeah, the, uh, the Renewable Energy Working Group is essentially asked, uh, and is looking for funding, basically technical assistance funding, to help, um, do exactly what you just said, um, and also to evaluate each of the town facilities by using, uh, work already done, perhaps, through the Green Communities, um, grant. And, um, so this type of work is available through a grant that will be released mid-June, we're told. Uh, it's called the Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Grant, META, and it's through the Department of Energy, um, at the state level. And essentially, that will help the Renewable Energy Working Group, that will interface with a firm selected by the state, if Monterey is successful in achieving that grant. That grant is basically, uh, twelve thousand five hundred dollars, that other communities have already received similar grants, and they each receive that amount of money to put toward the work done by the state, uh, selected consultant. So, uh, if the town is lucky enough to receive that grant, there's no local match associated, as far as we know. Uh, the actual details of the request for responses will be released, uh, during mid-June. So we'll have more detail available at that time. This information is based on other research that was done, talking to the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. So that's basically where we are at this point. I'm not sure.
Peter is here, and I see his hand raised. Susan, do you have any questions for Dennis about this grant?
I don't think so.
So Peter, you have the floor.
He's muted.
He may not realize that. Not realize that we brought that item up.
Well, he just.
Oh, he's just raised his hand. Peter, we can't hear you, you're muted.
Now he's okay.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you, Peter.
I just wanted to confirm what Dennis just said, that if we are awarded the Metta grant, we are obligated to use whatever consultant or agency or provider that the state specifies? Is that the fact?
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that's a wrinkle that I had not been aware of. Our group has explored possibilities for six months now, and although the first thing I asked for in December was a meeting with Emily Lang of the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, who was, I would hold from the beginning, working on Monterey's application for green community designation, and any, any meeting with her has been postponed several times for reasons that aren't completely clear to me, but because of this long period of just seeking basic information about the status of our green community and a sense of impatience on the board to get down to the business of actually getting some bids for solar panels associated with town buildings, we have begun to explore the possibility of having a fundraiser to fund a consultant and expected to, as a part of that process, assess proposals from three different consultants, you know, according to ordinary procurement rules. So, as I understand it now, and this is news to me, if we follow through with this grant and get this grant, we'll be obligated to go with whatever, whatever consultant the state specifies. So we've already contacted one consultant, I've had two productive conversations with Integrated Systems, and that's the consultant that Stockbridge used for their, for a major solar field on a, on a discontinued town landfill site. That, that's a major photovoltaic installation, you know, commercial grade and industrial grade installation. We don't have any similar closed landfill site in Monterey, so there's no, you know, there's no comparison we might do Monterey. We're just seeking to get bids on solar panels for town buildings. We've already talked to one consultant.
Can I, Peter? Peter, sorry to interrupt, can I ask a question for you and Dennis? Quickly, if I, if I'm understanding the discussion properly? It sounds like you might already have consultants in mind, and if this grant was received, it might require that, you know, the town to use a different consultant. Would it make sense to maybe push this off a week and let us figure that out? Would that hurt the grant deadline at all, Dennis, or would a week be acceptable?
No, I don't, I don't think it's a problem at all. In fact, in agreement with Peter, what could be done is, when the request for responses is released in mid-June, we can take a look at that issue again, because sometimes, from year to year, priorities change on a given grant.
Yeah.
And if that is still in the requirement, the eligibility to participate, then that can be, you know, discussed further.
Peter, can I ask one other question? Do you have any sense of, I, I have not even a ballpark of what solar on town buildings would run, right? So I don't know if we're talking 10,000 or 200,000. So since this would award us a max of 12,500, for all I know, that's a single plate and we need 30. So do you have any sense of what the people you've been in contact with are talking about for a sort of overall project price?
I could answer that question, if it's okay with you, Peter.
Sure, go ahead, Dennis.
Okay, the 12,500 is to pay the consultant for the study, essentially a feasibility study. It's not to purchase PV.
Okay.
The document will perhaps say XYZ buildings could use this much solar, and maybe give an estimated cost, the best and professional guess of it.
So it's not for the actual work, it's a proposal of what might?
It's a technical assistance grant.
Okay, thank you. I does say that right there, but.
So if, if there's no objection, we will consider this in a week or two?
Sure.
Is there any objection to that, Susan?
Not for me.
So Peter and Dennis, we will figure out in the next couple of weeks if this grant, you know, it'd be good to get the money and there's no town match for technical assistance, but we'll figure out if there's any reason that doesn't make sense to do, and then we'll come back in a timely manner that doesn't prevent you from proceeding with the grant.
That's perfectly fine.
All right, so we'll come back to this in a week or two. Thank you. Thank you, Dennis, and thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Bobby.
Okay, I think that's enough jumping around for the evening. Let's go back to old business number three, setting a special election to fill select board vacancy. So we could do August 23rd from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and if we formally announce that next week, that would still be well before the 60/40 minimum, that would be, by my account. And by my account, I went on a website where you just put in two days. It would be 76 days apart between June 8th, which is next week's meeting, and August 23rd. It's my understanding, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do August 23rd. We talked about doing it Tuesday in August from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM, but we're saying it now publicly, and I think if there was any large reason why we couldn't.
You were gonna find out about the voting machines?
The, so the voting machines, it's my understanding, I think if we have, it may cost a little bit of extra money for an additional chip.
Okay.
But I, I, my understanding from the town clerk was that we could purchase an additional chip if needed, if the turnaround time is too short. But because we have the state primary and then the state election in September, November, unless we want to wait until December, or.
What about October, I mean, October would also be an option? I would think it's in the middle of the two.
I think, it sounds like we may, I thi- it sounds like we may need to buy the chip, or we may not need to. There's this shipping that goes back and forth to somewhere in the middle of the country.
So the, after you use the machine, you have to ship it there, and then have to ship it back?
Just the chip.
Just the chip.
Not the machine.
And this is also a machine that no one uses, is my understanding, but it's required by state law.
That we have.
That we have it, available.
It's, it's, people with disabilities use the, can use the machine. No one does, but.
It would be there, if you wanted it.
It's, it's the law, we have to have it.
So this machine would be in addition to our good old fashioned crank that we have?
Yes.
Ballot box?
Yes.
Is it for, it's for that, I mean, you said it was a person with disabilities, it's for actually filling out the ballot, not, not, no?
They, what happens is they, they put our ballot on this machine, they use the chip, and they put the ballot on the machine.
Uh huh.
And, and you can make your selections by eye gaze?
I see.
Or by, by sound, or?
It's for actually filling out the ballot, essentially, Chris, yeah?
So they can vote. We have to have it by law.
Okay, I, I was not disputing whether we should have it, I just.
Yeah, that's, that's one of it.
Any idea what the additional chip would cost if we need to?
I think it costs $1,000 every time to reprogram the chip and get the ballots, because there's a minimum order on the ballots.
Right.
It's pretty large.
Right, and, and we use zero.
Yeah.
Right.
But I think at the end of the day, the, the election is going to cost probably a thousand or a few thousand dollars, but it would mean that we'd have a.
But we have to do it for the other election cycles anyway, so, do we not?
We have to do what?
Well, there's an election in September for the primary, and it'll have to be sent in and sent back, and there's an election in November for the primary.
Yeah, and this will just be an additional cost, but it's, it's all part of the business. So I would propose that we plan on August 23rd with voting open from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and if we formally announce that next week, it would give both people the week to point out that that's the same day as some other event, and that we can hold it that day, and, and then we can formally call it, which would still be well in advance of the, of the deadline.
Any other public comment about holding the election on August 23rd?
All right, so I'll add that to the agenda for next week, making it clear when the election for select board will be. Okay, number four, draft select board policy regarding written follow-up letters.
Is the one in here, is the one you, you're.
Yeah, the, I think it came out kind of funny. Melissa, is there any way we could just get a clean copy of the one that I proposed?
This, this is just like your edits, right? So that just shows me what, yeah.
I don't really know it.
Track edits.
I think when it merged, sometimes it more merges funny, that's probably what I have now. So one thing I did is I changed letter of understanding just to letter. I think when I have done a memorandum of understanding before, but it had to be signed on to by both parties, and I don't think that's what we're planning on doing here.
That's fine, I don't have a problem.
I said, instead of May, I said shall at the request of any board member.
I like it.
Because I don't think we should be required to.
No, I totally see your point, yep, I agree.
I said that the letter can be adopted at the following meeting or the very next, because I don't want, if we can't come to an agreement on the letter, I think that's actually something worth knowing.
Right.
Actually, when I, so when I first saw this policy last week, I didn't, you know, I thought, okay, it is kind of officially recorded in the minutes whenever we have a discussion with employee. I don't know why we would always have to draft a letter, but the more I got to thinking about it, it makes a lot of sense, because one thing that happens when we just have a discussion with an employee, or Dennis, or anyone, any group, is all say something, or you will say something, but unless it's included in a letter that we adopt and sign, or unless it's included in motion, it's not something that the board said, it's just something that we said.
Yeah.
And I think sometimes there can be some confusion where, you know, I said something three months ago to this person, but that wasn't the board saying it, that was just me individually. So I think if we make a habit of drafting letters to people, then while we're fleshing out the letter, we may realize there's something we disagree on, we can still figure out. So I, I think it is actually a really good idea.
And I, I think it's just good for every, it means everybody will be on the same page, that the other party knows where, what we think we said.
Yeah.
And if they feel like that's not what was said, they have the opportunity to then say, that's not what I understood, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good. I'm a little confused, the middle paragraph, the letter will be drafted by a member of the board for consideration at the next regular scheduled board meeting, following the initial discussion, and where it may be amended, the letter may be adopted at the same or the very next regular scheduled. So, so if we had a meeting on, one meeting where we met with someone.
Like, let's say we met with someone today.
Then next week, one of us would draft a letter, and then we'd have as long as two weeks before it actually got sent out.
So my.
Which might work in some cases, but might not.
Well, my thinking was that if we had a discussion today with Gary, then, just as an example, then next week, if I wanted to write a letter, or you wanted to write a letter.
One of us would.
To Gary, then I would draft the letter, propose it, because of open meeting law, obviously we can't discuss it outside of the meeting, but then I propose it at next Wednesday's meeting, and we could edit it and finalize it and adopt it at that meeting, or the very next one. But if it goes on too long.
Then it's moot, really.
Yeah, and we can't come to agreement, then maybe we never were in agreement. And it, it might have lasted the time. I mean, look, it's a, it's a select board policy for the select board, so to the extent that we ever feel the need to do something that's not as it's written in there, but I think it's a good encouragement. Alan Coburn?
You'd be, you'd be able, if you wanted to, on the same day as you had the discussion, to decide at that meeting as well, I think we should write it, and then you could do it then, right?
You actually could, that's not what this policy is getting at, per se, but it's a select board policy adopted by the select board. I think, I think this is probably the most realistic way that it will work.
But if there was some pressing need that it needed to be issued that day because of legal matters or something else, then I don't see why we couldn't draft it right there on the spot.
Oh, you need it, you need to issue it that day, but you could decide that day that we need to write, so that we have it ready by the next meeting.
Exactly.
Well, what's gonna happen, more or less, and I didn't go in too far into detail, but what's gonna happen, more or less, is that at that discussion with Gary today, either one of us should say, at that discussion.
Imaginary discussion.
Well, we're having this discussion with Gary, about having a discussion today. One of us will have to say, you know, I think I want to draft a letter for next week, or you just add it to the agenda. And then that's on that way. So that's where the, at the request of any board member, right?
Sure.
I didn't want to get too, dig too far into details in case.
No, I think it's a good general policy. The only question I was gonna ask is an all-in-all question, which is, let's say that we did have a meeting, and we wanted to draft a letter, and one of us said, I'll draft the letter, let's say it's me, and we know that's gonna be on the agenda next week. I can draft the letter, and you can receive the letter, like, on Tuesday before the Wednesday, so they can at least have read the letter before we discuss it at meeting.
No, not really. It's my understanding, doc, a document that may contain deliberations can pretty much be disseminated at the meeting, or maybe immediately before, or in the hours before, but not.
You don't actually have a chance to look at it before the meeting, which is very often.
That would be, even if there's no response, it's still considered a deliberation.
Okay.
And I mean, that, yeah, so we, and we're already on warning in some ways with the open meeting law division, so I think it's best that we.
No, that's fine, it's just not a very efficient way to do it.
No, it's not.
Because it, it means that you don't have time to actually consider what you might want to change, and you have to do it on the spot, which isn't ideal, but it's reality, so we do it.
Yeah, and so I think what will happen is probably either we will, you know, be more or less on the same page, be able to make edits in that meeting.
Right.
Or if we feel like it's far enough apart from the other person, then it will be the next week.
So do you need me to sign that, or do we have a different one?
So.
That looked like a clean copy.
This is a clean copy, which.
So that's a clean copy, okay.
Which is the same one that I, that Melissa has from me.
It's just without, it's without.
Without to track changes, because I, I changed it so significantly.
That's fine, I, I have no problem with it, you did a good job.
I've motioned to adopt the policy regarding letters following public meetings as drafted, or edited by myself. Second from Susan, any further discussion? I'll call a vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the motion carries to adopt policy regarding letters following public meetings as drafted by myself. That's item number four. Update on the KP Law Bill. So we had the KP Law Bill, we told them that we thought that there were things in it that were billed hourly that should be included in the general retainer, they agreed in every case, so we owe $3,003 more than the usual flat fee back from the March bill. So Melissa, it's my understanding, we do have that money in litigation fees. So I would motion that we pay the $3,003 out of litigation fees.
Is this last year's litigation fees, or this year's litigation?
Last year's, next year's will open on July 1.
The current year.
Current, current year, sorry.
That's right, because the current this way year doesn't end till July.
June, June.
Yeah, the end service, okay. Okay, let's do it.
So, second on the motion, any further discussion? What was the discrepancy amount?
It was a few thousand dollars. There were probably about half of the items that they billed hourly were, should have been included in the general legal services.
Sure.
And so we just noted.
And so we just noted that to them and they agreed in every case.
Sounds like it's a pretty clear cut. Thank you for doing a good job of reviewing the bill.
Yeah, but there were, there was three thousand in uh hourly bills beyond the general legal services.
It was legitimate because it has to do with investigation, which is outside the scope of my understanding.
Which is, I think, goes back to our earlier discussion, town council, just informing a little bit of my thoughts on that. Okay, so we have a second in motion to pay the three thousand and three dollars on the K P law bill uh out of litigation fees and expenses. Uh, I'll call a vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the motion carries. Okay, the next one is Green and Heifer bill, which.
Green and.
Were we waiting to have town council ask them to review it or?
More or less, yeah.
Yeah, then I guess we have to wait again.
Yeah, and so, well, I could, that could be the first or one of the first things that I ask Donna Brewer, if you like. The other thing that we should realize is that, and I'm not saying we shouldn't ask at all, but the more that time that we take to ask if we should pay it, uh, that is need bill, right? Um, and I.
I suspect we're gonna have to pay.
Yeah, so do you think that we should just go ahead and pay it?
Um, I think that we're not gonna get out of having to pay. I I wish that the contract had been better and clearer.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, but should have waited to it. I mean, unfortunately, it's, we agreed to it and they bill this and I don't really want to get into a litigation fight with them for a for billing list of, and you know, I may not think that they did a great job of reporting produced, but we were contracted for a service and they provided the service.
Mm-hmm. What was the amount of the bill? Chris, okay, so the special town meeting last fall approved ten thousand dollars. The select board requested an additional six thousand dollars from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund Transfer Plus, which was granted. And then the two bills totaled in the neighborhood of twenty one thousand dollars. What's the, do you have the exact amount in front of you, Melissa, any chance?
Ballpark is good for me.
Why you want to say it's five thousand here?
So we have sixteen thousand dollars uh available. Well, we paid the first bill, which was about half of the price, and we only have, we're short uh the money, but I kind of in in agreement with you in general, from what I understand, not from a lawyer's perspective, that we're probably obligated to pay it. And I think one thing that happened last year and that we should try to avoid, obviously, we want to use legal counsel because they are legal counsel, but I think if we, when we had a a flat fee agreement, we were kind of like, oh, just ask council, it's free, which doesn't really work for both parties. And it's not gonna be like that anymore, but it probably shouldn't have been like that last year because I don't doubt that that was related. You know, if lawyers can't work for free.
The only, my only question here is that, um, if there is any consideration of whether we're legally obligated to pay.
Yeah.
Um, waiting an additional week to get an opinion from the lawyer, we would have to pay her for her time.
Yes.
I recognize that. But even at a hundred, two twenty five an hour, two twenty five is a lot less than an extra at least five K.
Absolutely.
So it might be worth paying the two twenty five an hour to get out of the five K. It may be that we won't be out, be able to get out of it because they may feel that there wasn't a strong enough commitment to this much and no more.
Yeah.
But if they do feel that way, then, you know, a letter to Green and Heifer saying, this let this la email from the select board chair literally stipulates that the town can afford this much and no further and therefore we can't pay you more than that. I I think it's worth at least inquiring and I mean, I do think two twenty five would potentially save five K.
Yeah. Um, Donna Brewer.
It might be on both, but.
Personally, I don't think you owe the money, that's the first one. Secondly, the decision as to whether you owe the money is a legal decision, which you're not capable of making. So there's no question that you should ask that to council. In addition, there's another question you should ask council, and that is whether the town has claimed for negligence against the law firm.
For.
For negligence because of nature of their report.
For giving a portion of the report.
That report to me, my opinion personally, is that this was very negligent, we value the standards of the town, but not for me to decide. I think you should ask council to review that for report and indicate whether it's negligence, whether he had to pay for negligence.
Okay.
Uh, Nancy?
For council to do a thorough review of that report, the council would have to review all the complaints, all of the documentation and interviews that the, you know, report was created from, and that would be hours and hours and hours, far exceeding your bill.
No, yeah, I heard, I I don't think that's a route to proceed with. Personally, I won't.
I know.
But I think looking at two two emails and deciding whether it would be due to the extra overs.
I agree with that. Let they, let the new council look and see if there's wiggle room there.
So.
Justin?
Uh, Ellen Coburn?
Was there, I remember a discussion about um a statement by the select board that that was their final amount to be paid, and we think it was something like sixteen thousand. I mean, I could be remembering that incorrectly, but it's, was, do you remember something like that?
Yeah, so there's, uh, there was an email from, sent from Chair Weiss uh to Green that said that the total amount approved by the town had increased to sixteen thousand dollars. The question of our obligation to pay a service provider, I don't think anyone in this room is a lawyer, and so I wouldn't take legal advice from anyone in this room, but the question is really our obligation to pay them as a service provider. And, you know, if if, but from a plain, non-lawyerly perspective, if it had said, we agree to pay you sixteen thousand dollars, no, not a penny more, this is our cap on the project, would read very differently to me than the town has approved sixteen thousand dollars on a project that, uh, you know, is being billed hourly. So that's the whole question, is our obligation to pay? And Susan, if if there's no objection, I will ask Donna Brewer about our obligation to pay the uh fund fees in excess of sixteen thousand dollars based on simply the terms of engagement and the email sent from Steve Weiss, just those two documents.
The difference between sixteen K and.
Just those two documents. Unless you know of any other relevant documents, but I don't think there are any.
And I will do that as soon as possible because I think we should.
We should.
Finish that out, but I will ask that of Donna Brewer. Okay, and that settles that. Rural and Small Town Development Letter of Support. New Business seven A. So Melissa, it's my understanding, this is a study that would look at the feasibility and potential engineering of the renovation of Town Hall. And this is just a letter of support from the select board. I don't have any uh proposed changes that it reads fine to me.
All right.
I would motion to adopt this letter for the Rural and Small Town Development Grant.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'll just grant four.
Uh, it could be up to four hundred thousand dollars, but uh I'm just waiting for the estimate from the engineering firm to I don't know how much it'll be asking for, but I imagine it'll be about a hundred thousand.
Good.
So we could potentially pay for that whole thing. That's my um goal.
But it's, but it's all fees about, it's kind of like what Dennis is, it's feasibility and engineering, right, not construction.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, there's a second in motion to adopt this letter, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries. We'll get a clean copy to sign, I guess.
Yep.
Okay. Shared Human Resources Director update?
So we are making an offer, an offer was made today to one of the candidates that applied, and as soon as I have more to report and if she accepts it or not, I will let you know.
Okay, and we'll have that on the agenda for next week.
Um, if she turns it down for any reason, are you guys gonna make it off to the other one?
And we're second. Yes.
Okay. So there is a backup candidate?
Yes, we were fifty fifty on which um candidate to choose.
Interesting.
Yeah, they were, they were both good in their own ways and had strengths opposite of each other, so the majority ended up winning on on the first choice.
Would the, would the same offer be made to the second candidate?
Okay. And we're going right to the top this time, no, no dickering, everybody's tired of of going through this.
I can't imagine why.
Round three. Okay, so seven D meeting room furniture?
So I sent you guys some um pictures of called B B E up in Pitt Field. They have some scratching dent stuff that was in a um temporary office.
Is this one an eight foot? Do you know?
Eight or a ten.
I can go get a tape measure if you don't mind.
I'm, I don't think it's ten.
Yeah, it's probably eight.
I think it's eight. It's bigger than six, though. Six would probably be about there. So it might only be seven, actually.
I can like to take that. Um, my goal is, because that table is falling apart and it's on its last legs, is to give you more room for when there is boards of five, because you are on top of each other. So you saw the configuration that I sent, it's what he was proposing. Of the two options, one is two tables made in like J or one is the larger conference table. And again, eventually, I'd like to get you guys back over here with a TV up there so that you're not so far away. And then five chairs that are nice instead of three, and those chairs have seen better days.
So that's a six foot table. I'm pretty sure the one you're at, and I I felt like looking, my feeling was looking at those pictures. Um, I I kind of liked the big table better than the two small tables just because of like the construction of the tables and how open they are, and they just don't, it don't sound, they don't seem very weighty to me.
That one.
Is that, that's the big one, right? Yeah.
So if we got these tables, do we have to have a five member select board?
No.
But, but like the C B A has five members.
Yeah.
The planning board has five members.
Well, just starting out.
Does the, does the planning board meet here?
Um, there'd be a big committee center.
No, they make, they make sense, but they used to meet here.
They used to meet here.
They'd be A and G.
The concom meeting.
Indeed, I just said that.
Yeah.
And we, and we usually can fit at this table, although with with, we used to before COVID.
Yeah.
Because we were willing, like, to.
Yeah, since COVID.
Yeah, I know.
We spread out.
COVID.
And and since somebody else has to sit there and take up two chairs, we definitely spread out.
Justin's got pretty good instincts.
I know, right? Um, okay, so I don't know, did you look at the pictures?
I did.
Did you have a feeling about it?
No, I don't have a preference. I'm fine with whatever.
I kind of like the bigger table, I just think it it just carries a little more gravitas or something. Are you okay with the chairs?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not particular.
Personally, I kind of like these chairs, but.
Yeah, I won't tell you what's good on them.
Okay, let's get those other chairs.
It seems.
And these would be vinyl, so you could wash, wash them.
Hey, you got me looking at this there.
I'll play you some of them.
No, please don't. After you're not knowing. All right, what do we got left?
Special event permit request from Bidwell House.
Wait, did we already offer?
I was gonna say, so that was okay to get those?
I have no objection.
I have no objection either. Yes, let's get new stuff. Okay.
So, uh.
This is the event one, right?
Not, New Business number eight, special event permit request Bidwell House. Bidwell House Museum is applying for a Bidwell Country Fair on June twenty fifth at twelve P M. to four P M. Estimated three hundred people. No admission, yes music, theatrical event permit, no beer in line, no alcohol. Annual Bidwell Country Fair, free to public, includes demos and talks by artists, skitcraft games, et cetera. And there's less emergency contacts.
Okay, so is.
And this is just an event. Permit for over fifty people and music.
Okay. They've had this event before, haven't they? Or is this different?
Yes, uh, it used to be, and by the way, for anyone who may remember, at one point, I had refused myself from something regarding Bidwell House Museum, but I, and I have been previously employed by the Bidwell, Bidwell House Museum, but not in a few years, so I believe that the cooldown period has.
Expired.
Expired and that I'm able to participate in this special event license um because it's been years. The last time that I was working for them, I moved the lawn in twenty twenty, so it's been over one year. That's my understanding. Um, I have no opposition to.
I don't, I don't have any opposite opposition either. Um, like they've, they're an important feature of the town and their fundraising efforts are important and they've always been, I live right down the road from them, they've always been respectful neighbors.
And the Bidwell House Museum Director completed crowd management training.
Good to know.
On July twenty sixth.
Is that Diane or?
Heather Polsky.
Heather Polsky, oh, it's very good.
We can get rowdy.
Pardon?
I said, we can get pretty rowdy, yeah.
I know, right? Those outdoorsy types.
Yeah.
So I, this may, I guess this is the second time I've dealt with a special event license, maybe more careful. We just accept a special event license.
Just approve it, yeah.
I would motion to approve the special event license for the Bidwell Country Fair on June twenty fifth.
Second.
Any further discussion? Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries.
The pretty dealt with nine.
Review mail and correspondence, uh, received letter from the law offices of Timothy Burke regarding Karen Walker. I think it'd be prudent to not have substantive discussion on this letter to avoid potentially opening the town to liability, but it sounds like the insurance has already been, the insurance company has already been notified. Um, I can, in discussions with uh Donna Brewer, I could just mention to her that we have this going on, if that makes sense.
It probably, it probably makes sense, but if if this is something. So here's my question, and I I don't know the answer to it. Um, should you wish to discuss this matter in more detail prior to the filing of Ms. Walker's complaint? Is at the end, right? So, um, it seems like we may need to have a conversation with the insurance company lawyer. Um, since this regards a potential suit against the town, I would imagine that would have to be an executive session. Um, and, um, I I mean, I don't know how to proceed on this, right? So I think I definitely feel like I need um input from some council. Um, if it's gonna be council offers through the insurance company, then we should have a meeting with that council. Um, if it's gonna be Donna, then we should have a meeting with her.
Yeah.
Um, thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think exactly that. Uh, we shouldn't, I don't think that we should substantively move forward, you know, without advice from council, so I I don't think there's much.
But I, do you think we're going to need to respond to this?
I don't know, let's just ask council.
Right, but the thing is, it does say it within five business days?
Yeah, but that's wrong. I have ten days to respond to a public records request. And I'll send me estimate of what it'll cost to fulfill that estimate.
Okay.
I don't know why he has five days there.
Um, I don't know either. Um, but if we need to do that with some expediency, because even if it's ten business days, we receive this, do we receive it May twentieth?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I can make it, I think it's ten days total.
I have ten business days.
Yeah.
No, uh, open meeting law is fourteen days total, I think. Uh, anyways, I I don't think that this is something that the public records request is a bit different from other things in the letter, but I think that we should seek advice from council before further discussion.
All I'm asking is when we need to do that. That's actually what I was trying to ask her today.
Would you like to schedule a separate meeting with the attorney from the council, from insurance, or would you like it to be part of your next week's meeting?
I would like it to be, I think I would prefer it to be a separate meeting, but Justin?
Yeah, we, I mean, we can just start scheduling by email as long as it's just scheduling.
Right, do you want to give me some days that work for you so I can start off the conversation with her?
Because we may have to hear from her as to when she can do it. And we have to have forty eight hours for them, either mornings, evenings, afternoons.
Generally, during the summer, the evening will be best, but can be flexible. The evening, uh, it doesn't look like I got anything in particular, but if Wednesday, uh, can we please first, I mean, if. I mean, if she thinks that it makes sense to meet with the board at this time, since she's the attorney, I don't know what they do. Then why don't we propose Wednesday the eighth at five or five thirty, depending if she thinks it takes half an hour or an hour. And if not, as long as everyone, as long as five PM or five thirty PM works for other involved parties. And if not, the ninth in the evening or the seventh in the evening work for me.
I could do those two. I could also do the sixth. I, I just, I'm trying to.
Well, the sixth we're pushing, well, we'd have to get it posted tomorrow.
Right. Point taken. I, I'm just concerned that the clock is ticking.
Yeah, I mean, yes and no, not really, I mean, but why don't, we'll just ask now. I mean, if council thinks that it's urgent, then they'll say it.
Exactly.
So we, but it's not anything, I mean, I think we just have to ask council.
I can do any of those evenings. I could not be here before five thirty on Tuesday to the seventh. But I can actually do most of those days.
All right.
But if she can only do during business hours, what, what's your?
Boy, you can make work.
Okay.
I don't have any further discussion. Like I said, I think we should really.
No, there was nothing I wanted to say. I just, so it was important to get a meeting scheduled, that's all.
So approving minutes. I did not get to twenty-three, which I see you did, which is great, but I'll get to those next week.
That's okay. Should we start with sixteen since?
Yeah, why don't we start with maybe fifteen meeting minutes of the slot board? So I'll read, I think the best way to do this, I'll read through your corrections, see if I have any questions.
It's Justin's blue and I'm red.
Your purple.
Okay. I don't blame anybody for doing this one. Thank you. So there was a date, June sixteen. Thought I remembered I said it.
Yeah, I have it in my calendar, actually.
So do I. Let's see if they. Nothing.
Disrespectful. If it doesn't have to do with minutes, we're not talking about it.
I have, that it's at five PM that day.
Yes.
Doesn't mention the time on the minutes, should it?
We'll have it at five PM. You can add it if you want, we can just initial it.
All right, Justin, going forward, you may want to make an announcement that the people are recording you. They need to announce that because she was videotaping you guys.
Yeah, welcome to having the gun pointed at your head.
We already were being videoed.
Right, but if you're in the audience and recording, you have to let the chair know that you are recording.
Right.
That's under the open meeting law.
So I, I'm fine with your comments or changes with five sixteen. Do you want to add the five PM? And we'll just initial that.
Although this, this is still a draft, though, right? Or, okay.
Once we.
There you go.
Yeah, just in that way Melissa can clearly see the change. So I would motion to accept the five sixteen joint meeting, minutes of the five sixteen joint meeting with the finance committee as edited by Susan and myself.
Uh, second.
And yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. And usually, we'll just initial up there, use your ability. Sure. And then if we can just do the same thing for by eighteen. So I think I added a from, but it's, looks like it's gonna be redundant based on your edits. So let's just strike that blue from.
Yeah, that remotely, yeah, okay. There's three periods at the end of that sentence now, whoops.
Where's that?
It's after restricted document.
You have, or Susan? Why make the corrections of the law?
Okay, okay, no problem. Acknowledged. The line with G and H report. So fifth line from the bottom.
Oh.
Poured directly of the, you know.
Of the first page?
Yeah, number three, almost.
Acknowledged.
Poured directly from the G and H report, but acknowledged, there should be a D on the end word.
And we're using your clock and see.
Yeah, I did. If we're, if we're striking from all this stuff?
That I had marked, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to keep this in.
Yeah, so Susan stated that Susan stated that was not, Susan stated that this was not how that stated that this was not at all. So we'll remain, Susan stated that this.
Although it doesn't make sense for me to talk about my recollection of the conversation if we've stricken Terry's comment.
I mean, I just, I was stripping it because I didn't, I didn't. I felt like it was tangentially discussed between you two who had some understanding of it, but it seemed like everyone else was in the dark. Um, but if you.
I, I have to say that I felt accused by, by her, and so it was upsetting to me and striking that entire, like, I, I'm inclined to go ahead and strike it out of the minutes because if, you know, it doesn't make sense for me to respond to something that isn't there.
Yeah.
It's in the recording. I think she substantively misrepresented our conversation, and that was very upsetting to me.
Yeah.
But, um, I'm willing to let, let it go. There's a record of it in the recording.
So should we just strike all blue and purple?
So we, Sarah says she would not speak about this tonight. I mean, we did, in fact, now, I mean, I, so we did, I asked her to do that verbally on the phone. Again verbally at the meeting, again in writing. We still haven't received anything of that kind. You know, any suggestions of any kind, and she's unwilling to proceed with mediation, so, um, I, I just think there needs to be a record of that.
Right, I mean, just change it how you want, I guess.
Yeah, I know. I'm just trying to work through how that should go forward.
If you want to keep what I striked?
Strike that one. No, I mean.
Stay.
So we followed this meeting up with a letter regarding all the things we asked of her, so that there's also that as a record of the things we asked. Um, so I think I'm okay just
Yeah.
striking all of that part.
That's, I think that's one of the reasons for writing a letter.
Yeah, Terry said she would not speak about this tonight, period. Justin reminded all that we have, we have a solution that works for everyone. Did you catch that?
Well, we'll just make the change.
Okay, you're gonna make them on there and then I do it.
Sorry, just, they're big. If I, let me just do this for extra clarity. Because that's what we agreed upon.
No problem.
Oh, yeah.
Just strike the whole thing.
And then my only other thing was to type on the last.
I would kind of like to listen.
Sure. I would just write, keep it, and then just. So then there's just a typo in your last change. Oh, I don't know, do you have other changes on that page?
I don't know, I was trying to hear.
Oh, sorry.
Bug down that, sorry. Wednesday, the ten.
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, I think I lost this in my mind.
Yeah, typo.
Could then delete it.
What?
Could is in, but then out? I'm not sure. Is that mine?
No, I think.
Okay, so we explained that.
I don't know, sometimes, sometimes it's where you make the same changes and then it looks weird. Could.
It should read, Susan explained.
I think I moved could or something.
Mr. Weingold, would that was justified as part of the investigation?
Yeah, so what we struck, or whoever struck it, it's all fine, but you misspelled, you, you had to, you had to.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So I'll just, that's one of the change I had.
Here.
And if you're all set to go, I have motion to accept the minutes of May eighteen, twenty twenty-two, as edited by Susan and myself.
Second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are you doing twenty-three too?
Uh, I don't have those, so we'll do twenty-three and twenty-five. And twenty-three was a simple interview, and twenty-five was the last three of the meeting. We'll do that next week.
All right.
Any comments and questions from the public? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.